Providing that any action of this board can be appealed with the chance report of Davidson County. Then I need a motion, I don't know whether we need a quorum for this or not, but a motion to approve the meeting by electronic means and suspending the rules. I will read the motion and then somebody can make the motion. I move that the items on the meeting agenda constitute essential business of this board, meeting electorally is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseeans considering their COVID-19 outbreak. In any rule of the conflicts with the governor's executive order, sixteen permitting electronic meetings be suspended. Do I hear a motion to, do I hear a motion?
So move, so move.
Thanks Kate, do I hear a second?
Any second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Any public comment?
There were one that I know of that were registered.
Okay. All right, we're gonna skip the resolution recognizing Elise until we get everybody on board. We're gonna skip approval of the meeting minutes of the previous meeting because we can't approve them because we don't have a quorum. And, you know, all this stuff's important. I just hate doing it without people here, particularly if they're trying to get on.
Yeah, I sent a text to Joyce to see where she was and I haven't heard back. Larry, have you heard anything? He may be on the phone with her or Robert.
I just received an email that she says the password's incorrect, so I'm sending her a new link right now.
Okay. Well, I guess we can go forward with your report Kent.
Okay, I'm going to do a brief report and then Sean had a couple of items I was gonna let her in on. So we can, we can do our thing. I think you're right, the resolution recognizing Ms. Adler and Andrea's report are important. So we want to make sure everybody catches those.
Right.
I was just, my few things. 1.5, the computer access is going forward and it's been successful. It's been quite slow. We haven't overly advertised it, but people, a few people are coming in. I think the important thing is that all of our protocols seem to be working well as far as distancing the staff. We're not, we're not seeing that, to our knowledge, we're not seeing that we've had any virus issues due to this access. So we're happy about it. I think the main change we're going to make is allowing people to make same-day appointments, which we were not doing initially. Then, just kind of an update on the budget, we're still watching the budget. Susan and I have a meeting with the finance department next week. It's kind of a mid-year update. The positions, our open positions are still frozen. We have fifty fewer positions than we did in June 2019. And the other thing that's starting to happen to us a little bit, we have a number of staff, not a great number, but we have a few that either have COVID or are under quarantine due to having been exposed to it. So the other issue we're going to be starting to fight if they don't open up these positions pretty shortly is that we're going to become literally unable to provide public service at some point down the road. So we're watching that very carefully. If you, if you read through your board packet, one of the things that we obviously were not able to celebrate this year, you may have noticed the Green Hills, the new building, that October was its twentieth anniversary. And a few of you were around for that. So I'm sure it seems like just yesterday, but that building has been in operation for twenty years. And the data in the board packet is pretty consistent. I'm really kind of looking at that and waiting till we have a year's worth of data based on disclosing to really understand what's going on. But the data's been consistent. We haven't had a lot of ups and downs. The source is pretty consistent since we kicked into curbside. So we'll just kind of keep an eye on it. But really don't have much more than that other than what was in my written report. So are there any questions?
Wait a minute. I wanted to ask you about the Church Street Park and whether you know it more than just what was in your report.
I haven't had a chance to get any information on it. I don't know that anybody, I really probably need to call Monique Odom over the parks and find out where they're going there and I just need to get on that. I talked to Monique about what we're trying to get going again at Richland Park, but I did not bring up the Church Street Park. So as soon as I know more, I will let you know. But that, that request for information from the parks has kind of appeared out of the blue. We really didn't have any forewarning of that, so that was kind of odd to receive that, especially since we understood that it was under development by the non-profit group that Keith and I had been engaged with.
Well, I suppose whatever they do would have to go before the parks board, so that may be what's happening. Or it may be something totally off the grid that we don't even know about, so.
I think that's probably, yeah. And I know, I had some side conversations with a few people and it seems like their refurbishment of the park went off the rails pretty quickly due to the weather and inability to obtain some of the equipment they were looking for. So it really just seemed to kind of die. I know that Andrea and Jenna had been in conversations with them a little bit about programming and nothing more about programming over there.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions of Kent growing out of his report or what you just said? So the 1.4 million, that's kind of what we expected?
We didn't know if we were going to see anything honestly this year, so that was a nice surprise. That's just kind of starting to kick us in gear. We have been very conservative about purchasing and we were happy to see that. We've been told there'll be another four percent next spring. And if we could get another pop like that, then it would sure take us back in the ballpark that we need to be in.
That's good.
Yeah.
And is all that gonna go to collections or is some of it gonna go to?
This particular one was all to collections. The one we had in February last year was split between collections and repairs and equipment, so.
Okay.
Kent, this is Kate, does counsel tell you where the money goes? Or can you just?
No, what happens is that in the four percent, the rest of the department's primarily, the four percent is for addressing equipment or repair, repair work primarily, equipment. And we, we get some money for that, but not a lot. And so what we're typically looking at is that they know that we need money for collections and we make a, we make a request at the start of each year in the budget process. And so when they allocate that money, they do not always tell us what they're going to allocate it for, but it's pretty clear whether or not it's for collections or equipment. So that, and on one hand, they're not telling us what it, where we have to spend it. On the other hand, the allocation pretty much directs us in that direction. And I can see if Susan's got a long list of equipment and repairs she'd like to address.
And the other question I had was about the impact of COVID. You read the same things I do and the expectation is whatever this current thing called a surge is, there will be an even greater surge once you feel the impact of Thanksgiving. And you might, that might suggest that there'd be yet again a Christmas, New Year's kind of surge. Look, how do you manage that? When you've got people who, even if they're not sick, have been exposed and have to quarantine, as you say, I mean, how does, how do you manage that from an operational perspective?
Well, Terry and Jenna and the support operations just keep a close track on it. When we have people that are either exposed to it or have it, they report to HR and we know who's out with, with the COVID or are quarantined because they've been exposed. And Terry and her staff and Jenna and her staff have been adjusting accordingly. I mean, but it is going to come to a point where we are unable, I mean, if we don't have a continually rolling amount of people coming in as we have people going out, people recovering, then we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to make some decisions about how many hours of operation we can maintain or locations remaining open.
Yeah.
I mean, but, you know, you can't say enough for Terry and Jenna and their managers because they're doing a great job of watching that. I mean, and Sherri's been right in there helping them as well. So I mean, we have a pretty good, good finger on what's going on.
Yeah, so it's a real tough one.
Okay, it looks like Travis is on.
Good.
We do have a quorum now. I still would like to have Joyce and Robert on, but.
Well, maybe, maybe we can go to, Sean had a couple of things that she wanted to mention and see if we get them on by then.
I'll see you in a couple minutes later.
That's okay, you're, you're good.
We're glad you're here.
What do you do to, I can't see everybody, I just see names.
They're at the top, people have got their, their boxes extant. They've got their, they've got their videos stopped and you should have a arrow up there to scroll around.
Well, I can scroll around, but the pictures don't come up.
They've, they've got their cameras closed.
Okay.
Not intentionally.
ITS has told us that it's better for these WebEx meetings if we keep the videos off if possible and only turn them on when we're speaking.
Wow, definitely.
And it also depends on your home network, you know, how much bandwidth you got coming to your house as well, so, yeah.
This is, anyway, y'all know how I feel about this system. All right, well, why don't we then go to Sean for a minute and then maybe, maybe the others can be on.
Thank you Keith, I just have a couple of updates. One, just wanted to let everybody know, we had a really successful gala and I know many of you participated, so thank you for those of you who did participate. If you did not and you're interested in being able to see, because we really were able to highlight the library stories, so if you're interested in seeing gala or public lecture, just reach out to me and I can make sure that you have access to that because I think you will be very proud of the work that you're doing in terms of leading the board because this, there were great stories of transformation about the library. So that was great. We were slightly under our goal for the gala, which is kind of to be expected with it being a virtual event. The good news is in working with Kent, we looked at both the library and the foundation budget and have found that there's cost savings of, because we've been virtual in all of the programs, that we've been able to find cost savings. So at this point, we are not having to go into any contingency plan that we had talked about. So even though our gala fundraising was slightly lower, we're in good shape and the majority of our other fundraising efforts have remained kind of to goal. And so we are excited about that. Last week was Giving Tuesday. I'm sure your inboxes realized that by getting flooded with requests for giving to various nonprofits. Did want to report that we were able to raise over eighteen thousand dollars on Giving Tuesday, which far surpassed our goal. And we had a hundred and sixty new donors. Of those, ninety-one were new, they had never given. And I just wanted to mention this to the, to you all because I think it also is telling, ninety-one new people gave because, and this is my interpretation of it, but they see that the library continues to be essential even during these times. And so I think that was their way of wanting to contribute. So kudos to the library team for continuing to be relevant and it's reflected in our fundraising efforts. And the last thing I'll say is, we are looking, we have three events that take place usually in the first half of next year. It's the book club for our Carnegie Society, our picnic at the library, and then the new string city. And so we are in conversation right now to figure out what should be the plan for those three events. So more to come on that, but just wanted to let you know that we are working on various versions of a plan for each of those events. That's all for me.
Okay, questions? Bonnie? Okay. Well, back to our mixed up order of matters before us. So we still don't have, we still don't have Robert and Joyce, is that right?
Joyce is on and I'm looking here and I think Robert may be a call-in under attendees. So maybe Larry, if you can make that two-nine-three number a panelist and see if that's Robert.
I've been trying to work with Larry. Something happening with this WebEx and you can't see me. I can't see anyone, but we downloaded the news, so we'll fix it later. Because I've joined like three times now, so we'll fix it later.
None of us, none of us have the cameras working, Joyce, so.
Okay.
I can't make Robert a panelist, but I can unmute him.
Okay, why don't you unmute him and see if that's him?
All right, why don't we go back to the minutes?
Can you hear me now?
Robert? Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm here.
First of all, Robert, congratulations on the book.
Clap, clap.
Yes. I picked up my, of course, I had already gotten your email, but I picked up my New York Times on Sunday and there it was, numbers there.
Me and Dolly and Obama.
Anyway, congratulations, you must be really proud.
Thank you, I am proud.
Yeah.
Proud to know you.
Yeah, we all are. All right, let's move to the minutes from our October twentieth meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Now a second app?
All right, motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next thing up is resolution honoring Elise Adler. So Elise is on somewhere. Can't see her, but I'm sure she's, there she is, okay. All right, I'm gonna read Resolution 2020 dash twelve point oh two at the conclusion. I guess I will then ask for a vote to approve. If anybody is opposed, you can get off the board. Resolution 2020 dash twelve point oh two. A resolution commending the dedicated service of Ms. Elise R. Adler and congratulating her upon her retirement from the Nashville Public Library. Whereas, Elise Adler, Assistant Director for Education and Literacy for Nashville Public Library, retired on December fourth, 2020 after over thirty-six years of outstanding service to Nashville Public Library. Whereas, Ms. Adler earned a Bachelor of Arts degree, music, from Syracuse University in nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas, Ms. Adler moved to Nashville in nineteen eighty-one and worked for Nashville Public Library since nineteen eighty-two. And whereas, Ms. Adler went on to earn a Master's of Library and Information Science from Vanderbilt University in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas, Ms. Adler served in increasingly responsible positions as manager of NPL's Music and Film Department from nineteen eighty-seven to ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-seven, as collection department manager from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand, as branch services administrator from two thousand to two thousand and two, and as assistant director for education and literacy from two thousand two to two thousand twenty. And whereas, during her tenure with Nashville Public Library, Ms. Adler created innovative educational initiatives for all ages, pre-k through seniors, connected diverse city populations with citywide impact. And whereas, due to Ms. Adler's unfailing thoughtful approach to developing community partnerships with other groups and organizations, NPL is known for its positive collaborations and relationship with other national organizations. And whereas, Ms. Adler's cheerful and upbeat introduction to many programs such as Salon and Six Fifteen and the Courtyard Concert Series have launched many successful library events. And whereas, Ms. Adler extended to her personal pursuits as members of the executive board, as a member of the executive board of the National Workshop, serving also on the First Educational Council, being a youth mentor for the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Nashville. And whereas, Ms. Adler represents the best qualities we could ever see in a coworker, manager, and friend. Now therefore, be it hereby reassigned by the Nashville Public Library Board, that we hereby commend the meritorious and dedicated service of Ms. Elise Adler, congratulate her upon the occasion of her retirement from the Nashville Public Library and extend our warmest wishes for her enjoyment and continued prosperity in years filled with musical talent that lie ahead. Be it further resolved, that this resolution be spread through the official publications of the Nashville Public Library and maintained in the official records of the Nashville Public Library Board. Just let me say, this is a lovely resolution. But I don't think, and I commend the staff for its draft and its importance, but I don't think words on a page, turn of phrase, or expressions of appreciation could ever, ever do justice to the service that Elise has provided to the library over these thirty-six years. I've been in it since nineteen ninety-seven and I've seen the kind of impact that Elise has had. Without any disservice to Kent or Donna before him or the staff that has, that I've observed over the years, I really don't think that these wonderful awards that we have gotten, best library this, best library that, all of which are deserved, I really don't think we would have gotten those awards had it not been for Elise Adler. I think Elise, early on, figured out that the need in our community far outstripped our individual ability to meet that need. And she set about building partnerships with nonprofits, other agencies, community cities, individuals, philanthropy, so that we might meet that need in a more effective way. And those partnerships, I think, have really sustained us and, and most of the name-stake, nameplate outreach projects that we have really come back to Elise's innovation and hard work. So I really hate that we're doing this over a virtual medium because this deserves hugs and toasts and maybe some tears for the wonderful contribution Elise has made over the years. So I just wanted to take a little selfish personal privilege and say all that. I will now turn it to anybody else that wants to speak and then we'll adopt the vote.
Hear, hear.
Thank you, Robert.
This is Katie, I want to second everything that Keith said and Elise, it won't be the same without you and it definitely, as Keith said, would not have been the same without you. Thank you for all of your service, your heart, your soul, you've given it all to us. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
And how much you'll be missed. We will just all miss you and are thrilled that you'll be at Parnassus nearby.
Yeah, I'm coming to see you.
Say, oh, Robert's book.
And, and I just want to say, Elise is an awesome professional, but anybody can approach her. So everybody in the community, I see her everywhere. So just thank you for all that you have done and all you will continue to do for the library because you're not going anywhere.
So do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution? Oh, move?
Hardly, hardly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, honey.
I just think, Keith, I just want to say something so quickly. I just, I have to say thank you, you know, it's been the greatest career ever and it's the best institution and nothing matters if it's not for the people associated with it. Whether that's the great community, the incredible staff, the support from the board. You know, you can't really go wrong working with such smart and passionate and dedicated and creative people. So I just want to thank all of you for your support and I thank the staff a million times and I will never be able to thank everyone enough, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, a bittersweet day. We lose Elise, but we get to celebrate your career. So it's a good thing. All right, let's move then to Andrea.
Andrea, I might just give you about two sentences of introduction and turn it over to you. Andrea and Jenna came to me a while ago and we were just talking about directions that the civil rights area might be going to in the future and maybe changing course slightly. And I just thought that it would be great for the board to hear about the ideas that we have, she has for the Civil Rights Center and what we're thinking about doing and perpetuating its relevance. So Andrea, I will kick it over to you.
Thank you Kent, hopefully everyone can hear me. We were also having difficulty, I'm in the conference center with my mic and camera, so hopefully you can hear me.
You can.
Thank you. Thanks for the invite Kent and Kate, thank you so much. I'm excited, it's been a while since I've come before the board to give you any updates on what we've been doing with the Civil Rights Center. And so I'll go back a little bit. So I want to start, you know, most of you on this call were around when we opened the room in two thousand and three. When we opened the room, it was like any other, it was like a day that I'll never forget. Many of us remember those fifteen hundred people piling into the library. And I don't think we will ever be able to replicate that program. We've tried and we've tried, but we will never be able to replicate the magic of what happened when we opened that space. So from two thousand and three, over the next seven years up into two thousand and ten, our focus was to highlight Nashville's role during the modern civil rights movement. You know, we've hosted programs where we were the first to bring John Lewis and Diane Nash and Jim Bevel back to the stage for the first time. We were the ones who were responsible for bringing the Freedom Riders and giving them a platform, a public platform. So for the first seven years that the room has been open, we hosted thousands of students from all across the state of Tennessee. Every third grader and fourth grader, we worked really hard to make sure that our material was instituted into MPS and outside of Davidson County into their curriculum. We wanted every fourth grader who was doing a Tennessee history project to understand who Diane Nash was and who John Lewis was and who, also some of the local people whose names have been erased or omitted out of history. So we spent the first seven years steep heavily in history. You know, we, we had public programs, the history of the church, the history of the media, the role that the students played during the nonviolent movement in the nineteen sixties. And we were very successful in looking backwards. From two thousand and ten, we decided that it's now From two thousand and ten, we decided that it's now time for us to move forward. And for those of you who remember that program, it was, um, probably one of the most, um, as I'll, I'll quote Jim Lawson, one of the most impactful programs that he had been a part of. Because we invited Juan Williams, who was still with Fox News at the time, um, we invited Juan Williams and Jim Lawson to be on the stage to talk about the state of civil rights in America. So we're moving, shifting from the history to now looking at what are we, what's the next civil rights issue in our country? We also decided to bring in someone outside of Nashville. We wanted for the first time to put Nashville in a larger conversation. So we also invited Dan Losen, who was a scholar at UCLA, whose research involved civil rights movements, but connecting the pipeline to prison methodology from third graders. And so he brought a wealth to Nashville of that conversation. We also decided to invite, um, the first mayor of Laredo, Texas, Betty Flores. And we said, let, let's see what it's like to have this new political voice in our space talking and making parallels with Nashville, but also again, asking the question, what is the next civil rights issue in America? And we successfully did that. Our numbers continue to grow for the next ten years from twenty ten to twenty twenty. Um, I can tell you that on any given month prior to the pandemic, we would host nine thousand students of all ages in the physical space itself. Since the pandemic, I would have not imagined that our numbers would have exceeded that, but I'm happy to report to each of you that, you know, I, I, this morning, I spent this morning on a, on a Zoom call with close to two hundred and fifty people from Caterpillar Financial Services who wanted to be engaged in what is the next civil rights issue of our time. And so we've been able to host programs since the pandemic with learners and corporations and people all around the country. So it's, we've started thinking, so what do we do now? It's time for us to think beyond Nashville, beyond the South, and it's a natural progression. You know, we invited Juan Williams in twenty ten, and then we moved forward to be very contemporary with having Dr. Ibram X. Kendi here, you know, asking what do we need to do to become anti-racist? We were one of the first public libraries to ask that question of its community. Then we decided to invite Jerry Adams, Jerry Adams, political figure in Ireland with the public conversation. Let's compare Northern Ireland and Southern Ireland to the North America and South America. Let's look at what Bloody Sunday meant in both of these different countries. Then we got a special invitation to go to the University of Nusantara Mandela in South Africa. We were asked to bring our program and replicate what we do there. Since then, we decided that it's time for us to claim this idea of a global perspective and dialogue and conversations. And since we've been in the pandemic, it's a perfect time for us to do that. So our new approach in how we are planning to go beyond the states and go beyond this country with the Civil Rights Room is to really look at the global quest for social justice. Just this morning, I got a question, and I, and I did have to do a screenshot, and I want to read it to you, because this is the question that we got this morning when we were engaged with Caterpillar Financial. One of the participants sent to me, um, he said, well, I have a question, and hopefully you can answer it. There are countries that have a completely different approach to racism and injustice. For example, in France, where I am, the way to combat racism is not officially by acknowledging this concept of race. You won't find official statistics of race-related issues in France, but we all know they are legal. Every word, the very nature of the word race has a racist tone. So of course, the history here where I am is a little bit different from what you're speaking of. My mind immediately goes to the Holocaust. Can you answer this question for me? How do people there think of the pros and cons of the word race in its construct? So this is a guy who just tuned in this morning from us, who's in another part of the world, who's asking us to connect what he's talking about conversations in France to what we were talking about here. So it's natural for us to now take our program beyond the states. This is a perfect time. We hope that we will become, um, even more known as being part of this global conversation of human rights and not just looking at the modern movement of the nineteen sixties. We will never abandon the historic backdrop or the historic premise, but our programming will now become multi-dimensional. We will look at, we will go beyond boundaries. We will no longer have, um, conversations specifically looking at the North and the South. Our conversations will be about ethnicities. Our conversations will be about what is the anatomy of a movement and how that impacts. We are hoping to bring a global perspective with new strategies of what this whole idea of protest, civic responsibility, what it means for each of us with a human response and not just a Southern or Northern response or just a United States, um, response. So we're excited about that. We're excited of where we're going. Um, we hope that you are just as excited as we are. We have already had conversations that we've, um, engaged our communities and talking about parallels between, again, I mentioned Northern Ireland and Southern Ireland. We've had communications, um, with what was going on in Cambodia in the nineteen sixties. We also have had a public program already with looking at the Black Panther Party, but not just from the lens of the states, but the Black Panther Parties, the Yellow Panthers, the Brown Panthers, that were all global. And we talk about this global movement and trying to understand the anatomy of a movement from the sixties and what questions and what answers are we still seeking today in twenty twenty. So that's the progression of where we are moving. That's based on the successes that we've already had. Um, we continue to work, we want to bring more awareness to this idea of the struggle for human rights and expand even more. So I'll stop right there and give anyone, um, an opportunity to ask me any questions.
That's extraordinary. Thank you for doing this. On that, 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 that's really exciting. Gets me excited. What, what is the echo deal? Andrea, you might want to mute. So how do you, how are you, how are you, how are you reaching people globally? I mean, how, how does this guy in France find you?
Um, he, he works for Caterpillar Financial, and he's working with Global. And so, um, this is our third year doing a civil rights and civil society program and with Caterpillar Financial. And so in the past two previous years, they've come here. And so of course, um, and that number has been limited to sixty to eight, the first sixty to eighty people that worked here locally in their office signed up, they spent an entire evening for us, a three-hour program. And so this, you know, now we're opening, we're doing everything. We're, we have not stopped our public program since the pandemic. We've actually have done more programs probably within a week than we ever have, um, since we opened The Room. And so the gentleman, he works for Caterpillar International, and he signed up to be one of the two hundred and fifty people who registered for our program today.
Oh, very. And let me ask also, how do you, so when you brought Jerry Adams here or you brought Dr. Kendi, how, how, I mean, i- is that a public event? And how do people find out about that?
Thank you. Yes, they both were public events. Um, they both were marketed through our internal, um, library, uh, marketing team. Um, the Kendi event, um, Dr. Kendi's event, I can tell you, it was a Friday evening. We had one event that Friday evening and the auditorium was packed. We had to move to overflow and the conference center. Um, and then that Saturday with Dr. Kendi, we had a very, um, special intimate VIP, um, conversation with him sitting around the lunch counter. And there were students who drove from Kentucky State University specifically just to hear him that Saturday morning. Uh, Bill King was there that Saturday morning, and his conversation on that Saturday was intimate and private, but the public event on that Friday was open. Also, the Jerry Adams event, um, we advertised it through NPL's normal, um, channels, and that event was actually held in the Civil Rights Room.
Well, just put me on your email list. I'd, I'd like to know when you're doing these things. And I was going to ask, if, and I was going to ask if possible, can I connect you to, uh, Kenya McGlue, she is the Director of Civil Engagement of the Urban League, as well as Tim from Equity Alliance?
Yes, you can, and I can tell you that Tim, I had Tim, uh, Tim has already agreed. Tim Hughes, are you speaking of Tim Hughes?
Uh, absolutely.
I reached out to Tim Hughes two weeks ago, and he's agreed to do a, a public conversation with us and looking at the anatomy of a movement, but what is the impact on grassroots mobilization? So he's already agreed to do that. So please connect me. Um, you, you have my email address, too. Anyone will be happy to. We're getting calls from. Yeah, thank you. I can tell you now, we have schools, we have a school group, you know, so our focus primarily for the first ten years of The Room being open was Metro Davidson School, Metro Davidson County, Williamson County. Then we started going outside of the state of Tennessee, and I can tell you that we've had people, um, every year, we consistently get people from Beaver Falls, Pennsylvania, um, like entire undergraduate and graduate courses are building their syllabi around the room and the resources that we provide. And just this week, um, Elliot, one of our staff, confirmed that we will be doing a two-day engagement with a group of students in San Francisco. So, you know, that's a good thing that's coming out, that's, that's come out of COVID, so, or the pandemic.
So I think that as, as companies, uh, and international organizations are attracted to Nashville, this puts us on a good path.
Well, and, and it's an extraordinary opportunity, which we've all talked about, but how could the Library Foundation be helpful in expanding this? If you call us, are you calling the two-point-O? How do we get to three-point-O?
Oh, no, we're at three-point-O, Kate. We're, we're at three-point-O. So, so how, how can, how can? I think one way would be continuing to, you know, give us, so for instance, you know, um, Jarvis just said, have you been in contact with this person? You know, if there is an organization or a group of people that you know are wanting to have these amazing conversations and dialogues, or just be a part of our public engagement program series, um, maybe sending us their email addresses, or we will make a, a more deliberate effort to make sure that you all are aware of all of our public programs, particularly the ones that we're doing now virtually. Um, and you can tune in and join us and be part of those conversations. We've had some amazing, amazing programs just in the past three months, um, and, and they have been promoted with partners. You know, we partnered with Oz to have an afternoon dialogue on, on race and, and art. We partner with Garrett Bennett two weekends ago, um, two members from my department and then a member from Elise's team. We were part of a panel with Garrett Bennett, looking at how do we create a new generation of co-conspirators? So I would say what we would love is continued support, join us for these programs and continue to help us market what we're doing. I'm sure Sean would want me to say and help raise money for continued programs of the Civil Rights Program.
So what's your biggest constraint? I'm sorry about the, I'm sorry about the echo.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. Our biggest constraint is too much interest. I mean, I, I mean, there is the number of people who are reaching out to us daily. You know, I got an invitation, um, just yes, last night, to be part of a conversation with the Smithsonian, you know, and so it's amazing that now NPL has been the same conversation with the Smithsonian as it relates to a collection and human rights and civil rights. Um, and so wanting to say yes to everyone, but not having the capacity and the time to actually do that. Um, so that's our biggest hurdle right now.
Well, it, it would be a huge challenge for, for the foundation to reach out to, to companies in the area. And involve them and talk about that.
Turn off your phone or turn off your connection.
Okay, I don't have the phone on though. Thank you, Jarvis.
Maybe it sounded like me, but that wasn't me. That was Robert.
That was Robert, sorry.
It was me. I was getting the same echo until I turned my phone off, and now I don't have it.
Well, I say, I moved it away from it. Thank you. That's good. I would like to just add one more thing that I, I'm pretty proud of during this pandemic. Um, my team and I have taken a different approach as to how we are working with our local schools and our district leaders and, um, and educators in the classroom. Um, we understand, half of my team and I, um, have backgrounds in education and have been on the other end of that classroom. And so we really understand where, um, our teachers and our school administrators, we feel the impact that they are feeling right now. And so one of the things we've done since March is to make sure that we are reaching out to our educators personally, one-on-one, you know, like, how can we ease some of the stress in your classroom? We know normally you would have taken this huge field trip in February and brought all four hundred of your students at H.G. Hill's Middle School. How can my team and I take some of the burden off you and still give your students that opportunity to learn? And so what it means is that we are actually going in the classroom, taking some of the burden off the teachers. We're teaching forty-five minute lessons and hour-and-a-half lessons in classrooms across Metro. So we're pretty proud that we decided to sort of step back and not just rely on our virtual tours, um, since March, but also be more empathetic and understanding and personable with our educators.
Thank you, Andrea. It is exciting.
Andrea, um, can we sit down and, um, work through some of the work that you're doing and find, what you need to be able to do is scale what you're doing, um, and, and work on, on ways to do that, and we can support you certainly. Um, and now I've got my foundation hat on.
Definitely. I welcome that opportunity. Okay, great.
I think one of the nice things, Kate, is that Bill King and Sean have been engaging Andrea, and we're, we're all aware that we need more resources in, in order to continue this work. And, um, I think the foundation is kind of right, isn't kind of there right there with us trying to, to move this forward.
We, we thought to fill that gap would be great.
Yeah. And another piece I might just add to this too, and Andrea, um, is, uh, not mentioning it, but it's like, you have all this great work going on in the Civil Rights Room, the Civil Rights Center, and all these great programs going on, and at the same time, pushing forward with developing the Votes for Women programming to kind of at the other end of the, the building now, somewhat of a different staff, but somewhat of the same staff. So, uh, it's really impressive that they're able to push this program out, and at the same time, we're developing the Votes for Women programming too. So that, that should not be overlooked.
You know, that, Kate, that has been my dream, and I will publicly say that, and I know Bernie's recording this, that has been my dream for two years. Like, I internally, with Jenna and Kent, have been calling the space a Human Rights Center. I don't even call it the Special Collections. I literally say the Human Rights Center because I think there's something, you know, Bill King and I literally had this conversation yesterday about, you know, looking at the physical space, you have voting, voting suppression, a hundred years of women, women's history. You have civil rights on this end, global nineteen city, nineteen sixties. We have an amazing oral history collection that our department did with, called Nashville's New Faces, looking at, um, the changing landscape with individuals in our city from thirty-three different countries. And so it makes perfect sense for us to start looking at ourselves as being one of the first public institutions to actually be a Human Rights Center. We are positioning ourselves, um, to do that from behind the scenes, and eventually we hope we get there.
And I agree with Andrea that, I don't know why I'm getting echoed now. I'm agreeing with Andrea that the, um, pandemic, while, while it's been so bad, every meeting I've been to, there, there's so many more people. And so it's obvious we don't want to get in the car and travel and do all of that. And I think it's a real opportunity to develop another line of service where, you know, we can do things for people around the world and just do it, do it, use technology to do it.
And if I may jump in on that, Joyce, one of the questions that Jenna asked me, um, last week was our focus and plan for programming post-pandemic. And I would, and I mentioned to my team, you know, um, immediately that day, that we are going to continue to have a virtual presence. You know, we were forced to do this now, um, but I think this is the only way that we're going to have a global impact. We want to do just as much virtual programming and engagement post-pandemic as we are now.
Andrea, I think may point out to them, the kind of numbers you've been getting are far in excess of what we could actually house physically in our space, because you can get more people online to the programming. We're actually doing huge numbers. Tell them about that.
Thank you, Robert. Um, one of, one of the programs that Robert's referring to is, you know, we had multiple platforms. We had the program, we hosted it on Zoom, and we also had Facebook Live going at the same time. And so while we may have had four hundred people tune in on one platform and another two hundred on the other, we would have never been able to get just those six hundred people in this physical building for that afternoon engagement. It was only an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. But since then, there were three hundred and forty-one more additional viewers who've watched that program. So that's a total of over nine hundred plus, um, viewers and attendees in just one hour-long program. So we've been able to maximize by using both of those platforms at the same So we've been able to maximize by using both of those platforms at the same time, Zoom and Facebook Live. And it's been, the program continues to, people are still viewing it.
And can we add a link to the foundation that says contribute here?
Legally, we could do that. Kent, you might, or Keith, I don't think we can legally ask for money during program, can we?
The foundation?
Probably not. And again, remember that while the foundation is a significant piece of the funding for this program, it's not the entire piece of the funding either. So it's also a Metro government-supported program.
The fact that we are usually as surprised by the depth of the programming penetration, I'm sure counsel would be just as surprised.
Oh, we've been working on that, Kate. We've been working on that.
Okay. Anything else for Andrea? Thank you, Andrea. It's great. Great report.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one final item of business resolution, updating patron rules of conduct. Susan Dry. Susan, I hope you'll be just as exciting in your presentation as Andrea has been.
I always have to follow Andrea, and I am never as exciting as she is. However, we do have some business we have to take care of. An update to the patron rules of conduct. The patron rules of conduct policy is a policy that's been put in place so that patrons entering our facilities know what the expectations are to be there. This is a living document. We occasionally have to tweak it. We have to update it depending on the circumstances. The last time this was updated was September of 2016. So coming up to the present day, when COVID, with the onslaught of COVID-19 and our buildings having to close down, we were fortunate enough to receive some CARES grant funding. And that was to install Wi-Fi extenders at all NPL locations. So what that meant was, even though our buildings were closed, if you had a device, you could still get access to the internet if you needed it by being in our parking lots. And we anticipate that this access is not going to go away. We did put a time on when those extenders are working. So it's from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night. But having done that, that set up a slight conflict with our patron rules of conduct policy. So currently, conduct rule number 12 includes the following class one offense, and that's being on premises between one hour after official public closing time and one hour before official opening time. So now that when we open up, our hours are going to more than likely go back to the way they were. But we want to continue having that Wi-Fi access. So what we would like to do is update that rule so that being on library premises between the time Wi-Fi access is terminated nightly and before Wi-Fi access is turned on in the morning, except for returning materials, and so on and so forth, so that if people are there using the Wi-Fi, we wouldn't call them for trespass.
And what would those hours be, Susan, when the Wi-Fi comes on and off?
7:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the hours.
Susan, what data, are y'all collecting any data as far as who is connected to the system? And how long they're using it?
Larry, that's a you question. We collect data on everything, so I can't imagine that we're not. But Larry, do you have any information on that?
So we are able to collect analytics as far as the number of users, the amount of time that they've used on the Wi-Fi. Of course, we don't ever track anything for where they go or what they do. But yeah, we can get analytics for everything.
So we're asking the board to approve a change to the policy so that it will not, having the Wi-Fi extender and the Wi-Fi access will not be in conflict with our patron rules of conduct.
Motion to approve, to extend the hours that you can be on the Wi-Fi in the parking lot to change our conduct accordingly.
Don't move, Katie.
All right, we have a motion second. Are there any more comments or questions for Susan before we vote? All in favor? Did somebody say something?
Do you see that this would be a problem to anyone in the public?
No.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Jarvis, I think she's asked you to say that again.
Jarvis, what was your question?
Do you see anybody in the public would have a problem with this change?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is a good access point that we're going to be pushing at even more. And as people become aware of it, it's going to become more popular, especially helping with the MNPS and virtual learning situation as well.
What about any safety issues?
Well, I mean, anybody being in our...
At 9:00 at night.
Right. There's always concerns. People are in our parking lots anyway. If you, if you think about it, sometimes they're, they're just, we'll have random people parked in different parking lots every now and then, who knows? We really don't anticipate it being a problem. You know, at 9:00, we have a relationship with our community policing. And so if they know that, okay, the Wi-Fi turns off at 9, that when they're doing their patrols, they'll look and make sure that nothing is out of whack at our facilities.
I was just, that's good to know, because I think they do need to be notified. I was thinking over here in Edge Hill, with the lot that's gone on, it'd be good to notify midtown.
Yeah, we will, we will notify all of the cocos that, that the branches are in to let them know that the change is coming.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions for Susan? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What was?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Yep. All right. I think that is everything on the agenda. Anybody, anything else they want to talk about? Christmas. Where's our Christmas, where's our Christmas lunch that we always have?
You're having it.
It was supposed to be delivered to you.
All right. Well, I have to go. Yeah.
I was just going to say thank you to all of you for hanging in there in the strangest of years, as we all know. And hopefully, there's some daylight on the horizon here, what we're hearing in the news these days. But I appreciate you guys understanding. I was also going to make the offer, whether you want to say so on this, or just email me and let me know. But if you continue to be frustrated with this platform, the Cisco Webex platform that I, I suspect you're going to be dealing with for a few more months, Robert. Email me.
35 minutes, you'll get my face up here.
Let me know, and I will put Larry in touch with you, and we will do the best we can to try and get you set up a little bit better. So there are a lot of, a lot of pieces that impact how good of a signal you have and how well you're able to do this. So Larry can help you walk through them.
We have saved a lot of gas, though, not coming.
Yes, we have. And I don't have to hear about how bad the parking is down at this parking lot.
Yeah.
It's not bad right now, is it, Katie?
All right. Thanks, everyone. Y'all have a great, great Christmas, and we'll see you in January.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.